Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of March 20, 2018. First up is a salute to the flag.
To the flag, the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, how's the agenda?
Oh, yeah. I left something off.
Yeah, we did neglect to put the Conservation Committee on. We'll put them on, make that item AA under three.
Okay. Approval of the agenda with the addition of the Conservation Committee?
I'll approve it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Do we have an approval of the minutes of last meeting?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Which was March 6, 2018?
I'll make a...I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, Tom's up. Conservation Committee Department Head.
Tom?
You'd like to have you on the podium.
Tom?
I'm not the chair.
You are tonight.
Should I bring my chair up?
Nope. Nope, and you really don't have to say a word.
Oh, well, I'm not on that party.
Each year we dedicate the Town of Acton Main Annual Report to an outstanding member of our community, and tonight that outstanding member of our community is Tom Cashin.
Thank you.
I'll try to speak into the microphone. This annual town report is dedicated to Tom Cashin, a carpenter by trade. Tom utilizes these skills in his vocation as a building contractor with his crew being responsible for many of the new expanded or repaired structures throughout Acton and the area. Tom is such a staunch conservationist with his...with this deeply rooted conviction being evident in both word and deed. Tom embodies the tenet of having one hand for oneself and one hand for others. For over 20 years, he has volunteered his time and energy to multiple terms on a wide list of town and regional boards, committees, and groups. These include but are not limited to the Acton Conservation Forest Committee, Acton Recreation Committee, the Acton Planning Board, Acton Comprehensive Planning Committee, Acton Warrant and Finance Committee, Acton Democratic Committee, Southern Maine Regional Planning Commission, and Three Rivers Land Trust. He is also frequently seen at Acton Town meetings where it becomes clear that he is soft-spoken but willing to be heard when additional perspective is needed. No town can thrive without the continuing efforts of key community members to be caring of its welfare, vigilant of its direction, and involved in its day-to-day operation. Tom is one of those few but dedicated people, and for this reason, the Town of Acton will be forever grateful. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Can stop sweating about hebo-hibo now.
Yep. Sorry for getting you here on the prop faults pretenses, but...
They made me.
Okay, next up, under the Department Committee Chair Updates, we have the Fire Department, an ordinance review, and efficiency main contract.
So last week, I sent you copies of the proposed changes that the Fire Chief had sent over. Elise, you had just one change in regards to the effective date, so we can certainly take that off because the adopted date would be on there. With your blessing, we will schedule a public hearing and get this on the warrant for the June Town Meeting. Right? And there were some changes. Originally, you guys signed the efficiency main contract, but Chief Johnson's going to explain to you why the number changed.
Hi there, Steve Johnson, Fire Chief. So there was some changes to when they had come through and done the initial assessment of the building. There was some areas and some considerations that they had forgotten, so they reassessed and reevaluated the pricing, which went from basically from an $8,000 project to a $10,000 project. And through efficiency main, we're only responsible for approximately 25% of that, so we went from paying just over $2,000 to $2,800. So we looked at the budget and what we had left in my budget for this year for buildings and things like that, and the money was there, so we were able to incur that increase, which, as we've discussed, I don't think anybody else knows, but we're looking at a savings of about $2,000 a year in our electrical bill, so obviously the first year will be the real telltale, but at this point, that's what they're estimating we'll save. So obviously $2,800 for the first year to save $2,000 a year is certainly well worth it.
Okay, so you're saying the increase was about $870?
It was about an $800, just over $800 increase from the original price for our cost.
So that still sounds like a good deal.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to accept the increase?
Make a motion, we accept the increase.
I'll second it.
All in favor? We have to re-sign this new contract?
Yes.
I'll get that over to you tomorrow.
Just two signatures, two spots. Okay, Marijuana Committee, we have an ordinance review.
Good evening, my name's Richard Nass, Chair of the Marijuana Committee. We have...we met last Friday. Five of the seven present, and we agreed on this proposal, which I think we have volunteered to do, and you agreed to have us write up what we thought an ordinance might consist of. And did you pass out copies?
Yes.
They all have a copy, okay. So, obviously, we're not lawyers, so this may need to be reviewed by somebody that is better at fashioning ordinances.
Brad's looking at the...
Yep, I sent it to him yesterday to review all of the MSRA's and sent him the two other towns that we discussed.
So what we...this is basically a combination of what Chapley did and what the Town of Lemoine did, Lemoine being up near Bar Harbor, the two that Jennifer presented to you several weeks ago. We've added this couple of sentences at the beginning for the purpose of clarity. Put it in italics, it's not part of the ordinance. It's our hope, basically, that people can read that, it's very short and simple, and we'll get a better understanding of exactly what is going to happen if they vote for or against this either way. So that's our hope. A couple of other things I think need to, just so we don't forget about these things. At some point or other, the Selectmen are going to need to decide whether they want to extend the moratorium. That ends May 24th roughly. I think the...it's anticipated this will get voted on June 12th, so there's a few days in there. However you...whether you want to go an extension of 180 days or just the days in between is uncertain, it's up for you to decide, I guess. The other thing, I just wanted to thank the Board and Jennifer for getting their reports online. They're massive reports that the committee proposed, and they are available online now, so...
I also have them at the library to check out. If nobody wants to print them or read the computer, I have a copy at the library you can check out or read while you're there.
Unless anybody's got any questions, I think we're...I don't know, did you get any response from...
No, that's what I was going to say, if we can table it until next week, we just sent it, I think it was yesterday afternoon, Richard and I sent it to Brad, so hopefully by tomorrow we'll get something.
Okay.
We'll put it on for next week.
Thank you.
Okay, Road Committee?
Cindy Hart, Road Committee, tonight here to talk about RSMS. We've talked about this in the past, and the Road Committee has recommended that this would be a good way for us to start. It gives us an inventory of our roads and the condition of their surfaces. The new one also does some signage, and along with that, if we want to take a little extra time, we put in the road widths, which will come in handy to us later if we ever decide to get into striping on some roads, which I think we may. The cost of the program is $195 to the town. It requires a volunteer commitment of four people willing to donate 20 to 25 hours approximately for two weeks, the first two weeks in May, after our roads have settled down, to drive around and rate the roads. They will come in here on the cost of $195, covers them coming in here for a day, and training the people that are going to be on the road, and also training whomever will manage the information when it comes back into the Town Hall. But you will then have that to refer back to if it comes to us wanting to get a grant. Currently, we don't have the information available easily to get to someone so we can prove what we've done and when, and why we might need additional money. The...I spoke to him today, and the only stuff that we will need to do it is a GPS and a laptop. And so it's up to you now to decide whether this is something that you feel will be useful and whether we can find enough people to do it. I'm happy to volunteer to be one of the people. I'd love to have Kim, it would be great to have a select person to go around and see what's involved and see how it works, and...
So you're looking for a motion to purchase the program to start that?
Purchase the program, yes.
Do you have any comments?
Do we have a laptop?
So the town has...we do have a laptop, and we're actually in the process of buying a second one. I was going to discuss with you a little later regarding...we got one of the road signs from Augusta from DOT, you know, the signs that you see that, you know, what your speed limit is and what the actual limit is. Deputy Shaw recently did some training and was able to bring one of those signs back. Unfortunately, the program can't be downloaded on the York County Sheriff's Department laptop for security reasons, so we've purchased a very, very cheap one for a couple hundred dollars for him to be able to use that, so I'm sure we can...you only need the laptop for those 20 to 25 hours, those first weeks in May.
Sure, yeah, that's it.
Is there a couple weeks in the fall, too, when...
Well, this would give you...this would be able to do this part of the program. When I mentioned before the fall, it was when I was thinking of doing something more extensive and including camp roads, which are pretty impossible to do in the spring. But in the fall, you may decide you want to go back and do this and do it just for culverts and your water flow.
So right now, you're thinking of doing the first few weeks in May on just the town roads?
Just the town roads.
No culverts?
Just the town roads, then you would have that, and it gives you a great, great way to make your decisions.
Yeah, as long as we have the laptop to put it on.
Do we should make a motion?
Yeah, may I before you do?
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that we have the conversation, once they go out and gather all this information, you know, we need to get into this program, so we need to talk about staffing and so forth and see what it actually entails and what the turnaround time, I'm not sure how quickly, you know, I don't want them to, let's just say, you know, go out the first week and expect everything to be done, or, you know, I don't know how much data entry there is, so we need to, you know, we need to talk about it and figure out as a staff who's going to be actually doing the work as well.
Is that something the Road Committee can do, or the four people that go out?
Yeah, well, he's going to tell you. And I know that he's spoken to...I got a little ahead of myself here, but I know that Brenda's looked at it and Ken, and I don't know who else has had time, but apparently, she said to me it was pretty easy to do, and I know nothing about computers, so it's up to people that do know that.
I think I would take her out of the equation because, I mean, she's got plenty to do down there, and, you know, we can, I'm sure we can find someone else to do it if, you know...
Will he come, the gentleman, is he going to come down and train us?
Yeah, he'll come right down here and train us.
So maybe he could just train.
125...
I mean, I'm not worried about learning how to do it, I'm certain if, you know, if it's data entry that we can, you know, that can figure it out, we can figure it out. I just want to make sure that the Board keeps that in mind, that, I mean, if they're, you know, we're going to be down with staff member, and we just make sure, we go into it with a plan before you make a motion, approve it, and jump right on it. We need to be able to sit down and talk about a plan of who, when, and how, but I'm sure we can...
We'll think about it for a week, and how soon do we have to...
What line are we taking this out of? Have you...
Well, they'd like a call tomorrow to be able to make plans, too. 125 towns in Maine are using this now.
Is it...do we have like a training line?
The Selectmen have a training line. Are the Road Commissioners involved, are they doing any of this input, or what?
Doesn't sound like it.
Oh, he's shaking his head over there.
No, they really don't have to.
Yeah, it sounds like the Road Committee members.
So...
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like the data entry part's going to be mostly upfront when they're doing the surveys, and then after that, the maintenance of...
After that, you have it, and when your road surfaces change, you get the information in, you know when you're doing that, then that would be entered.
Matter of fact, dating?
Yeah, it would be a matter, once the whole inventory is done, that's done, and you go from there with whatever is added on.
So when you go out these 20 to 25 hours in May, and you take the laptop with you, you're actually putting that data in at that time?
Somebody is driving, somebody is recording, and two people are measuring, and you stop periodically when the road surfaces change and get out and measure the width of the roads. And this, well, you need it because we know we're going to have to widen some roads in the future.
It's not like you're coming back to the town with lots of information for somebody to sit down for a couple hours and place in at the same time?
No, I'm assuming if it's put on the computer right in the car, they must have a way of just downloading it to you.
Do we need to...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't feel like we need to wait a week, I think we should go ahead and do it, and get us signed up tomorrow. I'll, you know, if he shows me, I can do the data entry, I mean, I've done it before, so...
Perfect.
Okay.
I don't mind, maize goods before blueberry season, so...
That's right, and it's still muddy, and we're not in the garden yet.
Yep.
So are we looking for volunteers to be on this committee, or are you going to ask the Road Committee first, see if anybody's on there?
We'll ask the Road Committee first, and if we can't get the four from there, we'll open it up.
I, you know, I'll be one.
I definitely...oh, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, I told you I would, so...
Yeah, perfect.
Want to offer it to the Road Commissioners and see if they're interested in being on it?
Sure.
You want to come with me, David? It's okay. All right, I'll go then, okay? We'll get it in the computer for you. Yeah. I'm sure you have other things.
I like the idea, too. Creates a history, done record, digital.
Okay.
A motion is made, and...
Oh, motion.
Make a motion that we do the...what are those four letters?
RSMS.
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 You'll know it well by the end of 20 hours, and this is the bill.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? I just want to add that I think it's a great program to consider, you know, creating the history on computer and then being able to see a little bit of the future that's not inside David and Scott's head. You know, it's like, you know, we can see it on the system.
So that'd be nice.
All in favor?
Great.
Thank you.
Recreational Department?
Hi, Mr. Men, we have a couple things to ask.
Speak up, Chris, you're never that quiet.
You can turn it, too.
One was if we could raise the price of registration $5 from $20 to $25, starting in the fall due to our spring split, which are already, are out and about.
A little louder.
Louder.
Just point it up towards you mouth.
Point it right up.
There you go.
And then the other issue was we were to ask if we could put a flag, purchase a flagpole for the rec fields.
I mean, you have money in the rec account to purchase?
Well, we have that one fund that we can use, I forgot the name of the fund.
Yeah, they have money, we've cleared with the Treasurer and CEO that they don't need anything from them, and he's got enough money, but where's town property, I told him he had to ask you.
Ah, I think that's a super idea.
I think it would look great.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, I think, do we have to mention the electrical, to the, the electrical to the, what used to be was one of the first sheds that was in there, if we could get electrical to that one shed?
The snack shed?
Yeah.
I think that's been brought up before but never pursued. Certainly, if there's money in their account, I think that's what that accounts for.
Right, it was leftover money from previous years, I believe, that rolled into like, kind of like a slush fund.
So we have the Town Electrician coming out on Monday to do the library and the stove outlet. Possibly, we can send him Chris's contact information and start with a quote, and then we'll go back to the Treasurer and make sure the funds are there. What's the Board's thoughts on increasing their registration fee?
What's the reasoning for increasing it?
Well, we plan to offer a little bit more, like maybe give him a T-shirt or a shirt with the name on it instead of just returning the stuff back to the town and whatnot, instead of like those trophies that we give out.
So you wouldn't be purchasing trophies?
We'd...we purchase medals, which we saved $100 and something dollars for basketball instead of buying trophies, but we figured to give him a jersey or something like that as well. And, you know, some of the other towns, I know Lebanon, they're charging $70 for baseball, and we're still at $20, and I believe it hasn't changed in several years.
I don't see an issue with that.
Well, my only issue is, in my, when I did this years ago, I found that there was quite a few families that had hardships and didn't even pay the 20, and so I think that increasing it five more dollars would make it even harder for some families.
Well, we would still honor the hardship, I think they have to speak to Jen if there is a hardship rule, and we'd cap it off. I think we discussed if there was like three or more kids, we'd stop it at a certain amount.
So you have a family cap?
Yeah.
How much?
It used to be like, it would be $20 for the first child, then it was 15 for the second.
Right.
I mean, it used to go down years ago when I first started, too.
And we could even do it that route as well.
You know, if you have more than one child, then it's, you know, $5 less for every child.
Yeah, I mean, I have four, so right now it'd be $80, you know, if I didn't cap it, you know, so I understand different money issues.
How do they know about the hardship also? Like, say there's somebody that doesn't want to walk up and say, "I can't pay it," is it on the form or something, or...
Well, I don't think it is on the form, I think they would just not pay, and then I would give the name to Jen, and she would track them down and discuss it with Jen.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea to put it on the form, I mean, you know, if you put it on the form, that that option is always there and that we'll never turn any child away, and if anybody needs assistance, that they can reach out to us in advance. I know you just did a ton of sheets, but it's probably a good idea, well, actually, we just did a ton of sheets. It's probably a good idea to put it on there, do you know what I mean, just so they know, and especially, I mean, and I've told Chris, it's nothing I haven't said, I mean, I just want you to put a lot of thought into increasing him, and we've had people, you know, not being able to pay, and his budget is down, and as much as he's got some good points, you know, I want you to make sure it's absolutely necessary.
Right.
Maybe take some input from the public over the next week or so, it's not going to start until the fall, right?
Right.
So you don't have to make the decision tonight?
Well, part of me, too, is, you know, you're, you've, you're the rec department director, you should know what you can and can't afford, and, I mean, if you felt like you didn't have enough funds, maybe you could have asked for more through the budget process, or...I'm just throwing out ideas, I feel like I shouldn't, I don't know, I kind of feel weird being asked permission to...
Well, and the problem with our budget before was we had, say, like, field maintenance was $4,200. Technically, it's only $2,200, I think, we paid, the town paid out, so I took $1,000 off that.
Right, but what she's saying, I mean, you could take, if you take $1,000 off that, you could take baseball, if you spend $500 on baseball, increase it to $575, you know, your overall budget is still going to either be down or within the 1.5%.
Right, but if I make, if I do the increase and it brings more revenue to the rec, it takes less burden off the town's budget, per se.
Yeah, yeah, it's a catch, I mean, it's one way or the other.
Yeah, damned if you do, damned if you don't.
Yeah.
If you didn't have the increase, could you still supply the T-shirts?
We're not sure yet, because it depends on how many kids we have. Now we have kids calling me from Lebanon, and I have kids from Sanford that want to come, so who knows?
What if you flatlined your budget, because I know you took a decrease, if you flatlined the budget, do you think you'd be able to do the T-shirts?
Maybe I'd have to look into it.
How much did you decrease it by?
$3,600.
That sounds like a good...
I would say that would be quite a deal.
Right.
I just hate to have families not participate because they see that number and they don't want to ask for help, or...
Well, we could put something on the...
I know it's only, it seems like it's only $5, but...
Table, yep.
Yeah.
Let's table it for a week or so and give some thought, and maybe anybody watching this can...
And if you're out there, public input.
Well, we have started, we were looking into having local businesses sponsor teams or sponsor the rec, so we are looking back into that, I know it was previous, and for some reason it fizzled out.
Yeah.
You can get businesses, I mean, we'll pick on David because he's here, Winchell Escavating, you know, I can remember, my son was, my son was always on Labby Oil, and
I know a lot of the signs blew off the sign, but they...
Oh, no, all the signs, it's actually still down on the rec field.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, because there's the comedy club that was...
Oh, spectators?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
I think it's good for the businesses, too.
Right, free advertising in that way.
And we have a business director now that's going on five pages long, you know, and some of them you would never even expect, I mean, like the Acton Candy Works, I mean, that's just starting to get out everywhere, and that's a, you know, phenomenal business, I'm sure they would, I mean, there's, keeping it local, I mean, there's lots of places, so... Let's, so we'll table it for a week and...
Yeah.
Give us a week and think about flatlining the budget maybe and seeing if you can use the money that way.
Yeah.
I mean...
Thank you.
Allegate more to each board.
All your work.
Yeah. Thank you.
Flat Ground Road.
So the only update I have on that is that Mr. Lankowski drafted the agreement, and it was his request, Attorney Lankowski's, that we send it over to Burke and Clegg for a second opinion, so it is in Brad Moore's hands now, and I have not gotten anything back from him yet.
Okay. Buzzard Road Meeting Follow-Up. So, we had a good meeting. We did find something very informative in the 2010 Town Report that Buzzard Road was voted in as a town road, or, I'm sorry.
Townway.
The, the end of Buzzard Road that we've been discussing the last month or so was voted in to be included to the one point, to be a 1.27 mile long road, and picked up the last, do you remember the .31 or something, point something? But we are in the process of...
Verifying it?
Verifying that. Somebody thought that there might have been an amendment to that, so we're going to find that video online to be sure, so that's our update.
Yep, and Mike Corey has gotten back to me and said that he does believe that he has it, or at least has it in the archives, he wasn't able to log in earlier because Eric was working on the computer, but he says that he'll get to it today or tomorrow, so we'll put that on next week's as well.
Yep. Atlantic Broadband Agreement, we'd like to table till next week.
Yeah, and I gave you the actual, I don't know if I've given you that before, I think I might have just emailed it, but that's the actual, did I print that off and give it to you?
I think so.
That's okay.
All right, well, now you have two. So that's the one that Mr. Corey will also be here to discuss with you next week.
Okay. Medical reimbursement services.
So you have reviewed this a couple of times. Burke and Clegg reviewed it, and he did put an addendum to the contract. I'll read his email real quick. So I sent, the email that I sent him, "Hello, Brad, the Board is going to be making a change with our fire and rescue billing company, we are considering the attached company, can you please review their contract and let us know if you have any concerns." So, "Hi, Jennifer, there's a few changes I'd like to make, despite the wording of a three-year contract, it's really only an annual, year-to-year, I think we should call it what it is. Also, their clause about collecting receivables for 90 days beyond termination is unclear, I want to make sure the billing cycles are filled up, are followed up. We also need a clause to allow you to terminate it earlier or breach it if you so choose, rather than rewrite an entire contract, I've drafted an addendum to attach to it." So I sent it all over to Medical Reimbursements, they've reviewed it, signed the contract, Michelle has reviewed it and signed it, she did make a change. Originally, this company wanted to deposit all of the checks into their account and send us a check once a month, but Michelle asked that that be changed, that all the checks be payable to the Town of Acton, like our current company, and they mail them to her once or twice a week. So all of the parties at B, including the Fire Chief, have reviewed it, so, and you guys looked at this last week, Elise, I made a couple of changes you had, so I'm hoping for two signatures, one for the addendum and one for the actual contract. It does still say February because that's when it was drafted, so Brad said to leave[1761.14] So Brad said to leave that. And we said, what, April 1st, we were going to change billing companies? We're hoping to get a better, um, result.
So with all the eyes that looked at this, do we have a motion to sign the Medical Reimbursement Services contract along with the addendum to the contract?
I'll make a motion that we sign the contract for Medical Reimbursement Services along with the addendum.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
So while they're signing that, Chief, they're going to, Sean, the owner of the company is, sure, he's going to, we'd like to set up an appointment for him to come down and go through everything, you know, who's got authority to do what, up loan to the runs, all the way down to the collection. So figure out who you want to be in that meeting, and Michelle and I will schedule it.
Obviously, myself and my administration, like Rick, and possibly Deputy Langley as well.
Okay, so...
That way, all three are completely in the loop and on the same page should...
Okay. Is there a time that's better with their schedules?
Um, evenings. If, if you give me till tomorrow, I can actually check with Deputy Smith and find out what his other work schedule is, so we can try to accommodate something. Give a couple of options.
Ideally, I think we'd like to do it before the April 1st switch over.
Agreed, yep. No problem.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, new business. We have Warrant and Finance email questions and concerns.
So I put that on the agenda. I had sent an email to Warrant and Finance, asking them if they wanted to meet with the board. I didn't hear back, so I'm guessing that was not. But I wanted to make sure that the board saw their concerns and saw their questions and, and gave you a chance to, to answer it. I've tried to forward you all of the emails, but essentially, so there was a bit of miscommunication. I think we're all on the same page now, that the budget meeting is still on for the 24th, for this Saturday at nine o'clock. They just, one of the things that we've heard over and over, and even at the school, is that they're not giving enough time for the warrant. So they, they really have, have stated that over and over in their emails, so I wanted to make sure that publicly I relayed that as well. And they are asking about the, the donations. When you met with Michelle on Monday, she told us that all of the donations stayed within the 1.5. And that 1.5 is based on last year's request. One of them, for example, that she gave us, the Historical Society, asked for two thousand last year. We only gave them a thousand, but we took the 1.5 to base off the two thousand, because that was a request. So everybody's within that. But I didn't know if, if they had, if Warrant and Finance had any additional questions, or if the board wanted to address it. But really, it comes down to those two paragraphs. They want to make sure with Social Services, they know which direction you're headed in, and that you give them enough time on the warrant.
Yes, yep. I just want to let you know that you, you'll get four weeks between the time of getting, receiving the warrant and when we need it back to, to sign. You'll have, is four weeks not enough?
Four weeks is probably enough. What I would ask is that we extend that into the first week of May. Easter is on the first, I believe.
Oh, no, wrong month.
Huh?
No, Easter is Sunday. He's right.
Okay.
So...
Easter's the first of April, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the fifth of May, the fifth of April, the sixth of April, would be probably too short. We'd like to ask for at least the month of April.
That's what I said. You're going to have four weeks with it. We're looking to have it back either April 30th or May 1st.
May, yeah, May 2nd.
You're going to have it ready for us when?
March 30th.
March 30th, you'll have it finished?
Yep, and then you'll have until the end of April.
Until the end of April.
Even the first of May.
The first of May.
First of May, yeah.
Okay, okay, so that, that would be fine.
Okay.
As far as the donations are concerned, we're aware of the fact from the school board hearings that we've had, that there is an increase in the disenfranchised, economically disenfranchised children coming into the school. And it was because of the school's real ardent effort to get the information to the state that this year, we're going to have a windfall of two-hundred-and-some-odd thousand dollars specifically for the economically disadvantaged. My question to Ms. Rue was, knowing that this is happening and that times are becoming more and more difficult, the Warrant and Finance Committee wanted to ask the Board of Selectmen if they wanted to look at the donation list again and perhaps start moving some additional funds from perhaps the ones that we have already to things, for example, like increasing the amount of donations to the, to the town pantry that's here, food pantry that's here at the church. We gave them a thousand dollars last year, but I think we're going to need more as people become more and more economically troubled. So we'd like some guidelines on that. We kept it very close to one to one and a half percent last year, as far as the whole budget, which you had just acknowledged. And what you may want to consider doing, and what I'd be want to offer, would be to take like 2% or 3% off of everybody and put it into things like food pantries for our, our citizens who are having troubles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the April 3rd School Warrant.
Typed done. Proved by Warrant and Finance to confirm their recommendations. Proofed by the School Committee to confirm their recommendations.
Okay.
Should be good.
I would like to, first of all, thank the School Committee for all their work in preparing this. I want to thank them also for opening up the table to the Warrant and Finance Committee. It was a long process dealing with large numbers. I, I think, I, I sat through the process last year. I thought it was very transparent. You gave, you gave plenty of opportunity to hear Warrant and Finance questions, and you gave great answers. It was a very open and welcoming process for the Warrant and Finance Committee. I want to thank you for that. Also televised. I, I think that the, you guys did a great job. Thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
Did a good job.
Line by line. Is that a nice...
We just want to be sure people know these budget books now are available. They're going to be placed, I believe, at the Trading Post, at the Post Office, the Numbles Post Office.
The Clerk's Office.
You can leave, leave some at the Clerk's Office here, and you can leave some at the library, too.
Just details everything that's in the budget.
We can also scan it and put it on the homepage of the website.
Oh.
Send it to me electronically. We'll get it online as well.
Okay, so I'm not reading...
You guys have all seen this. You've read it. You've proofed it. You've gone through it. Their attorneys...
I've read and proved, and reproved.
So we just need a motion to sign it.
Watch the meetings.
Watch the meeting. I did. Okay, so, um, okay. So do we, I don't have to read. I'm sorry.
Now you're making me nervous. The only time we've proved that. So I have shown it to you.
I've already proved it. I can't keep looking at it.
No, you just need a motion to, to sign it as presented and discussion.
Do we have a motion to sign as written?
I make a motion that we sign it as written.
Seconded.
All in favor?
So that will be posted tomorrow. School Budget Meeting is on April 3rd, seven o'clock at the Acton Elementary School.
We don't need the marijuana thing. So there's no Board of Selectmen meeting, um, on that, on the 3rd that evening?
I'm definitely not Chris's height. On behalf of the School Committee and the School Administration, I just would like to thank the Warrant and Finance Committee for all the time that they put in this year on our school budget. They came to all of our meetings. We had many open discussions. While we didn't always agree on everything, I think what we did agree upon was that the budget came in at a very low, very low point, point seven, zero point seven increase. And I really appreciate all the time and effort that they put in to meeting with us.
So we have, up next, Iron Tales Saloon Liquor License.
So Mr. Martinez, owner of Iron Tales, would like to move forward his liquor license application. He did include a note asking for the public hearing to be next Tuesday. I did call him and tell him that really mathematically, we can't do that. I mean, it's not, we usually, we post liquor licenses for a solid seven days, seven to 10 days. So the problem comes is that, so we don't have it on the 27th, you have no meeting on the 3rd. So, I mean, you could do it on the 10th, or you could have it on the 3rd at 5:00 and just have a public hearing. You wouldn't be able to vote on it until the 10th, or you could just wait and do it all on the 10th.
When does, when does his license expire?
Well, his license doesn't expire until May 1st. However, he did mention that he is working very close with the State Fire Marshal and Code Enforcement. He just doesn't want any surprises. Last year, we ran, he ran a little closer to the deadline, and he's trying to be proactive as well. So he's also, you know, if there's anything special the board wants, I've reached out to the Sheriff's Department to get all the calls for the past year. You know, I don't know if there's anything else, maybe, that you want in advance, but really, the, the concerns or anything?
Really just the calls and the approval of the Fire Department?
Well, approval of the State Fire Department is what he's, he's indicated. But you guys can have that conversation.
Yep.
After, so, so when do you want to have the, when do you want to have the public hearing?
Just do it on the 10th. Do it all.
Do it on the 10th?
Do it all on the 10th.
Do it all on the 10th.
So public hearing at what time?
Did you say five?
It's up to you. I mean, it's a liquor.
Yeah, we can do it real quick at five.
And because it's at five, we will take written responses via email and concerns in advance. They can send them in, and you'll read aloud. Sometimes 5:00 is hard for public hearings.
Okay, Mass Gathering Permit?
This is Vacation Volkswagen, what is it? Volkswagen Vacation. I'm going to put my hands on it.
Early this year.
Well, we had a death, which is very unfortunate.
Oh, yes.
Do you remember little Lou that used to come in in a wheelchair?
Yep.
He was awesome. And Lou passed away. David Wallace is trying hard to fill his shoes, but it's August 5th. Nothing else has changed. They've still got the same gang, but that's everything. He's cleared it with the, with the fairgrounds. And then the fire and rescue and police, everybody will get a copy of that if approved.
Okay, so the name of the applicant is David Wallace of Pittston, Pittston, Maine? Vacationland Volkswagen Association, presenting the 29th Annual All Volkswagen Car Show, Sunday, August 5th, at the fairgrounds. Do you see a time? Oh, showtime, showtime, 9 to 3. Do we have a motion to sign the mass gathering permit?
Make a motion we sign the permit?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I don't think there's ever been any issues down there of any sort. I'm sorry? And I did get the checks for the liquor and the mass gathering.
We have an appointment? Selectmen's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Bridget Whitman. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine, hereby appoint you as a recreational committee member, within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 2018, given under a hand this 20th day of March 2018.
Make a motion we accept the...
Appointment.
The appointment for Recreation Committee to, for Bridget Whitman.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Thank you, Bridget. Okay, we are now open to public comment.
Dennis Long, I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but with a crowd like this, I mean, I have to say something, just for the attention. I, I would ask that the board deny the request from the rec to increase the amount of money that we're charging our kids. They have, and I'm not sure of the dollar amount, they have in their, I guess you'd call it, their undesigned fund. We, we roll over the money every year that's left over, and we put it in an account.
Forward.
And there's thirty, forty thousand dollars in there. It's quite a bit of money. Yeah, and if I had my druthers, then we probably wouldn't charge the kids anything. And I think it's incumbent on the people that belong to the rec, being a past member when the rec started, to make it work for the kids. And like you said, get sponsors and, and things like this, because especially the kids at that age group, the town offers nothing for them. And I think that's the least we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Seeing no further public comment, I'll move on to the announcements. March 24th, the Acton Shapley Lions Club is having their turkey dinner at the Shapley Church from 4 to 6. April 13th, there's a deadline to file nomination papers for selectmen, District Two Road Commissioners, and two school committee member positions. That's the deadline to file the papers. It's a Friday, right?
Right.
April 28th is Hazardous, Hazardous Waste Day from 9 to noon. And we're going to have a flyer at some point to, to know what's, what is a hazardous material. Upcoming meetings, March 20th, Conservation Committee, that's tonight, meets at 7. March 24th, Joint Workshop between the BOS and the Warrant and Finance at 9:00 a.m. here in the Town Hall. March 27th, the Board of Selectmen meet at 5. March 29th, the Cemetery Committee meets at 5. And do we have office hours this week for, no, it's the fourth Thursday, so... With the following?
Nobody this week.
Okay. Anything else? Blood drive, when was that?
It already went by, March 15th.
Yeah, the other day.
It's gone a week. I think that's it, then.
Yep.
Have a motion to adjourn?
I have Girl Scout Cookies for sale in my office.
For the Acton troop?
Make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?